Hey everybody and welcome to another Utah Down Ballot Show podcast, show podcast. I'm here with Kim Coleman. You want to say hi, Kim? There you go. And Aaron Bolen?
Hello.
So before we get rolling too far, what's, what's new with you guys?
Not much going on. I've been taking it easy. I'm catching up on some reading. Pleasure reading and nothing's going on. Oh my gosh.
Definitely not following the legislative session at all.
Oh man.
That's not, that's not what Kim would do.
Yeah, then Kim also would not watch impeachment, a second impeachment of
Oh man.
45 this morning either.
I couldn't bring myself to do it. I'm just like, you know what? Just tell me when it's over and all the dumb stuff they said.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not even gonna bother watching. It's
Well, you've already seen it. I mean, we've already seen it. So I mean, we know what it looks like. We know what they're gonna say. Interesting that now we bring full video production works into Senate hearings, which
Oh wow.
By the way, it's not allowed by their rules, but you know, we live in a world with, with lots of high-tech editing functions and that now is part of Senate hearings.
Rules schmooles, right?
Other than that, it was really sleepy. So.
I can't imagine that the American people are that interested this time around. Or that they were that interested last time around either.
Yeah, but like I said, we know, we know what they're gonna say. We know what they're gonna do. We know the outcome before we get there. And yeah, this may surprise you though. I'm, I'm gonna watch your eyes and your reactions. This may surprise you. On the question of whether the, this process of impeaching a, a past president is constitutional. Our senators were split.
No way.
I'm shocked.
No.
Gee, I wonder which one voted which way.
I almost fell out of my chair shocked. Jeez. Yeah. Hey, there's Utah. Uh, there's Utah for you.
Yeah, I don't want to say sour grapes, so I won't. But anyway, um, yeah. Yeah, like I said, I, I just couldn't bring myself to do it because I just get mad at the TV. So. Yeah, but yeah, we're, let's talk about Utah though. So, um, Aaron's been in the thick of some of this, man. Um, and, and I kind of want to dive into a little bit of it because, um, I've been talking to people and the situation with, uh, is it Natalie Klein?
Mm-hmm.
On the school board? I mean, that has just gotten crazy, but what's funny is, is a lot of my neighbors who aren't politicos at all. They're following this, right? So the people that generally I'll talk about, oh, this is going on in the state legislature. Oh, this is going on in the federal, you know, talking about the impeachment and they're just like, okay dude, whatever. They're watching this and they're super, like one of my neighbors, I text him, I'm like, hey, is there anything I can do for him? And he's like, yeah, support that school board lady. And so, you know, I'm just saying.
That racist, that racist.
Oh yes.
Racist forward lady.
And, and a white supremacist Nazi, whatever else. She's been called it all at this point. It's very odd because it's almost like it's a blessing in disguise that some people, you know, that aren't normally involved or paying attention are kind of interested in, in this whole hubbub. I mean, it's definitely only been recorded, I mean, reported, sorry, one way. Very slanted against Natalie.
Another surprise.
Yes, also so surprising that Utah media has been, been very biased in this. But I think people are beginning to wake up like, oh, wait, what happens on our school boards actually matters? And, and we have people that think it's okay to share their, you know, political ideologies or, you know, their opinions about different lifestyles in the classroom. And, uh, and we don't believe that. So even, even though, you know, the media has definitely been pushing people to hate on Natalie more. I think for the most part, people are coming out in support and saying, no, she's just making us aware of what's happening in the classroom. What people are, are trying to implement and we're thankful for that.
You know, there was a Tribune article by Robert Gerke that just trashed her up one side and down the other. And so Natalie has earned her stripes now. She has been a target of Gerke and, but yeah, what he unleashed, I mean, the, the, like, like you're saying, Charles, some sleeping dogs and some people who, um, you know, if, if we're gonna look for some silver linings in this pandemic, one of them has been that parents have been able to look over their children's shoulders a little bit more, uh, that they've been able to peek into the classroom a little bit more, that they've been able to, to look at curriculum that their children are being taught a little bit more. And, uh, desire for school choice has really risen in the last six months. There's some, some good, uh, um, good solid polling by a group called Ed Choice. If you go to Ed Choice and look under their research, uh, you can click on Utah and see, uh, how we've recently, I think this was back in November and December, but how our state pulls on, on school choice because of, you know, a lot of this. The, the in and out, back and forth quarantine, non-quarantine. Only all the worst parts of school and none of the good parts of school. And, uh, but, but yeah, there's a lot of eye opening with, with what, uh, children are being taught. So then you have Natalie that comes in that campaigned on a platform of, you know, we're not going to indoctrinate our children in sort of anti, um, you know, anti patriotism and, and, and the critical race theory, which is only part of, of a larger body of critical theory. So if, if you want to do a dive on that, it's, it's really what our children have been taught for a good 20 years now. That is, explains a lot, but it also is moving people to, to decide. Maybe to do more about it in, in like Aaron said, uh, they care more. I'll tell you what I also care about is my local school board and what have they done? So, you know, a couple nights ago, my city council, one of my city councilmen, he posted just this frustration about one of the local high schools is going to shut down again because there are 23 cases. Well, you know, two days before there were 21 cases of COVID. So all of a sudden, you know, two more cases is some magical trigger, which just, we continue to defy common sense. We continue to defy science on a lot of this stuff. But he kind of moans about it now. I mean, he's a good guy. I supported him. I, I consider him a friend and, you know, not just my rep, but, uh, but a friend. And he's actually not my district rep, but, um, you know, it just got me to think, there's my dog that wants to be inside again. And as soon as, oh, okay. So, uh, so the, the, what, what really got me there is I thought, wait, 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 you have a bully pulpit. We elected you also to take care of the people of this city. And, and, and are our city representatives, our, our local school boards, our county representatives? What are they doing? Are they pushing back? Are they demanding hearings? Are we seeing petitions and open letters? Are we seeing resolutions of my city council? That says this is not okay to do to kids. And so I kind of shared my thoughts, piggybacked on his thoughts. Is if, if you are an elected official and, and you are representing the people for whatever district it is, city, county, school board, state legislature, governor. And you are not speaking out clearly, strongly, aggressively to not continue to let our children be collateral damage in adult wars, then you failed. You failed. And I don't care how good you are at making decisions for public reps. Or, you know, where you're gonna put the master plan park or, or how many buses you're gonna purchase for the district. If you didn't take care of our kids. If you didn't take care of our kids at a time when it meant more than ever for, for them to have support and advocacy and protection. I don't care what you do. I don't care what else you do. You can be the best freaking budgeter in the world. But if you didn't take care of our kids and advocate for them during this season. Uh, you, you shouldn't be there. And so anyway, turns out there's a whole lot of people who agree with me and have said, I want to help. Let's get rid of the people who didn't step up to the plate when it mattered the most.
Yeah. So yeah, just a comment on that. I think really what Kim is describing is a divide, not necessarily politically or ideology, but, uh, based in character for our elected officials. And there are, you know, some school board members, um, that, you know, align maybe ideologically, but some are willing to do something. Some are brave, let's say, and some are not. Some are, let's stick to the status quo. Even though I don't agree with this, even though I'm not okay with shutting schools down under this criteria, I don't want to make waves. And, and that really, you know, separates the wheat from the tares in, in regards to elected officials. I think, um, you know, post-Trump, I think we all, uh, kind of recognize that now that, you know, something that people really, a lot of them connected to with Trump is he was willing to fight a lot of things that others were not. You know, that comes with a, a total package that maybe people didn't like all the time. But if we can look at our elected officials and think, you know, maybe there's, you know, dozens and dozens of Republicans in the legislature, but I can probably count on, on one hand, how many of those, uh, meet the criteria of brave or willing to do something, willing to pass legislation. Uh, that is important. Um, that, that's a problem. And, and I think, uh, it's a problem that we need to deal with politically in Utah.
You know, cause there, there are lots of people that can make, uh, decisions about budgets. Although I did take the time to review my cities about the last six months of their, uh, meeting minutes. And, and I'm not so sure they're making great, a lot of other things, but you can get all that right. I mean, you can get all that right, but if you don't have courage and you don't have fight, you know what? I can find a whole lot of people that can cast a vote. Courage is a little bit more in shorter supply and, uh, and we need it. We need it.
Well, it, there, there are a couple of things here that I kind of want to hit on. First of all, as far as the local school boards go, I mean, um, I'm the board chair for a charter school here in American Fork. And it's the one that my younger kids go to. And I'm going to start making a nuisance of myself at the junior high where my older kids go to because it's also a charter school and I can go and I can sit in their board meetings, right? And it's not this school, you know, school district board over a whole bunch of schools. They're just in charge of that school. That's one thing that I really like about the school choice, uh, is that, you know, I can go in and I can talk to these people. And what's funny is, is that the way that I wound up getting on the school board is I just started showing up to the meetings. And they had an opening that showed up.
And you were the only one there.
And I got appointed. Yeah, pretty much, right?
That's tough. Government too, so.
Yeah, it's, it's so, it's so true. I mean, um, you know, some of the stuff that I've been involved in in the Republican party and other stuff. Yeah, it was just because I was there, you know, I stood up and I said, how do I help? And, and people, they'll take advantage of that. And then, and that, but the nice thing is, is then you're involved, then you know what's going on and you can actually influence some of this stuff. Uh, one other thing though, that, um, I've run into. And, and this is, it's interesting because it's in my podcasting and tech career more than, you know, the political stuff that I've gotten into more recently was, um, I went through this about a year and a half ago in 2019. And, um, a lot of these activists went after a friend of mine who I stood up for. And then another friend of mine stood up for it too, but he wasn't very nice. I was a lot more nice. Um, and so they came to me and they said, you need to disavow all these people or we're gonna come after you. And they actually managed to damage my business and, uh, my reputation within the community and things like that. And so this stuff is real, right? I, I just want to make this, you know, this stuff is very real. But the, the other thing is, is that I had so many people come to me afterward and say, we're so glad that you didn't bow down to this, right? And that's the thing is that for as many people as say, as outspoken as you are, you're gonna get yourself in trouble. You know, you're gonna put yourself in danger. The flip side is, is that there are a lot of people that just need to see somebody stand up. You know, they just need that person to step up and say, hey, this isn't okay. And then all of us out here start to come together and support them. And that's what I'm seeing happen. So we definitely need to do that. Yes. We're desperate for leaders. Are you kidding? People, people are starving for this kind of leadership.
Well, and this is the show, right? This is Down Ballot. So we are talking about really where the rubber meets the road.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we're watching congressional hearings today. Our legislative session is, is in right now. Natalie's on the state board of Ed, but I'll tell you, this stuff has been pushed at your local school district in your local schools and, uh, some of our city councils, uh, they stand by and, you know, um, Aaron might want to speak about this, but you know, a couple of years ago, a good friend of mine, uh, got elected to Riverton City Council. And that's, uh, Toni McKay. And, and pretty early in her service there, she passed a resolution, a pro-life resolution and, uh, in opposition to, to abortion. And, uh, she got a lot of criticism for that. And, and saying, people were saying, you're a city council. Go worry about public works and budgets and, and safety. Don't, you know, don't bring that in. That's not your jurisdiction. Um, her jurisdiction is representing the citizens and using that microphone that she has for whatever's relevant for the community. And so, um, I have had some pushback on people saying, well, yeah, you can't come down on the city council. It's really not their job. It's the legislature's job. Bull. It's everybody's job. It's everybody's job. It's everybody's job to protect our children. So if you've been elected and you've raised your hand to say, I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna, I'm, I'm going to be responsible, have a stewardship over these citizens in this area. That's everything. That I, I don't think there's any limit. I mean, clearly manage the city government. But at the same time, you have people in those boundaries where I wanted to see my mayor say, Mayor, County Mayor Jenny Wilson, see this line right here? That's my city. Stay out. You can do whatever you want on the other side of that, but you don't come into West Jordan. You don't enforce things in West Jordan. Um, so those are the kinds of leaders that we need to see. And, and, uh, we don't see a lot of that. Um, and, and our local city folks, local school boards, they're kind of quiet and people don't show up. As I looked through the last many months of
The only people that show up to our meetings are the board and the, the director of the school.
Well, now part of this was very likely, you know, had something to do with, with COVID, but, um, I looked and saw, um, meeting minutes after minutes after minutes, going back weeks and weeks where there was no public comment. And, uh, that's, that's a shame. And, and yeah, that is probably a little bit impeded by, by COVID. But, um, I've also been to city council meetings and they're crazy like, like nobody shows up when they want to raise your tax. But boy, if they, if, if, if the question is whether you can have chickens or more than two cats, then the line goes out the door in the parking lot. And so we just really, you know, on this show in particular, Down Ballot, recognizing what's going on at the local level. So it's time for our, our local school board to stand behind Natalie and say, yeah, not in our, not in our district where we're gonna try to, we're gonna try to do math, science, history and English well first. And then maybe we'll think about, you know, social indoctrination, maybe. If we, if we can tackle those main things first.
Yeah, I want to chime in one, one more thing because I had one more point. Um, and, and you're kind of talking your way around this, right? Um, and I kind of imagine like all the mayors in the state standing up and saying, hey, no, right? To, to the legislature, to the school board or to the governor or whatever, right? Be it COVID or critical race theory or whatever. But the other thing, when I kind of got the idea for Down Ballot, the other thing that I realized is I had, I kept hearing from my neighbors. The constitution is hanging by a thread. And then people started saying, there's no thread. And my point, because I thought about it and I'm like, I'm like, are we just post-constitutional? Are we so far gone that we, you know, we don't have any hope? And I realized that the threat is us. Right? The threat is us, we the people, right? We can stand up and we can elect different people. We can stand up. If we all stand up, then we can, we can change it. We can go back to the constitutional principles, which empower us, we the people to do what we're doing. But it all starts with the people we elect at the local level and then at the state level and then at the, you know, at the federal level. And so we should be doing everything we can to empower our local, uh, people to do exactly what Kim's talking about.
Well, sometimes it's, it's hard to, to know how to go about that. And, you know,
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, as we have these discussions, I think it's, it's important to know how some of these things end up playing out and how to truly have an influence. So I, I'm gonna be Jen Sackey for a little bit. And, uh, hopefully we can circle back, circle back a little, um, to, to the discussion about Natalie. Cause we, we've been talking about her. A lot of people don't know what went down. So I'll just give a quick summary. Basically, um, Natalie had said a few things on her page about how the school board was going to be voting on a recommendation from a subcommittee, right? A non-elected committee that said, you know, what we'd really like you to do is implement, uh, anti-racist, uh, trainings. That, that has a whole bunch of, uh, you know, rhetorical overload to that semantic overload to that word.
On purpose.
Cause it's related to, um, the book by Ebrem X. Kendi. And he says that anti-racism is anti-capitalism, but we'll, we'll come back to that. Anyway, they wanted to implement these trainings and they said that the reason behind it is that there was disparities in educational outcomes for different racial groups. Uh, which says to me and Natalie and others that, okay, what we think is that our teachers are racist. And if we just taught them not to be racist, then the kids would do better. Right? Which is, which is something I completely oppose and disagree with. So, so she said like, okay, here's, here's a vote on, on this access committee recommendation. Um, and then what really ticked people off is, um, she attended a conference, uh, put on by the Utah Pride Center, uh, which was for supposedly teachers, administrators and students on how to teach about the LGBT experience, uh, in school in Utah. So, uh, she posted a video from them. They got mad. They made it, they made it private. So no one could see it. And then they started putting out these statements that she's homophobic. Black Lives Matter piled on and said, oh, she opposes critical race theory, therefore she is also a racist. And then they also found something that I had shared about how, um, the state board hired a diversity, equity and inclusion director for $230,000 a year to do who knows what. But, but basically, uh, under her purview is creating these trainings that have not yet been approved. So we hired her, uh, and they, they think they're gonna push this through, uh, to teach all of our, you know, educators that they're, that they're racist. And that they have inherent bias that they can't get rid of ever. And so they just have to deal with it. Anyway, so they, they caught a screen capture of that. They put it in a document for Black Lives Matter along with Natalie Klein and enablers. Um, as, you know, uh, targets of Black Lives Matter, which, which is just funny. It's like I, I agree with maybe some of the goals of Black Lives Matter and I agree with the concept, but now they hate me and they're calling me a racist. So. You know, that's, that's scary when a group with that much power comes after you and tries to destroy your life. They actually said, you know, we are going to destroy Natalie Klein. And the funny thing about Natalie is she's like, well, I'm just doing my job. And if somehow, you know, they changed the law to remove me from the board, right now there's no removal process. But if somehow they changed the law, uh, then I'm okay with that because I was doing my job. And, you know, my, my husband's kind of immune from all of this backlash. And so she was in a good place to do it. And a lot of us, a lot of us are being silenced because we're not in a, in a place where we can stand up to these cancel culture mobs. So anyway, they had a petition to remove her, which means nothing because they can't do it. Uh, you know, I put out a counter petition that says, you know, we support her in her opposition to critical race theory. And that got thousands of signatures as well until the, until the website we were using, Action Network took it down. Cause they said they violated their terms of service. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So far I've put, I put up.
What term of service did you violate? That's always the question.
The, the not being a progressive nut job, uh, term of service, I guess. No, I, I mean, they, they say plainly on their website, this is for progressive organizing and activism, but whatever.
I didn't realize that was yours.
Yeah, that was, that was, uh, me and a buddy of mine put that together for, for Natalie. But I mean, so.
Much more conservative moveon.org.
We've gotten kicked off of moveon and change.org and Action Network now for different projects that we've been working on. So I, I don't know if there's a conservative solution, um, just, you know, free online web solution to doing petitions and letter campaigns like this, but.
I don't know, but these capitalists better figure it out.
If, if only I knew a tech guy who might be able to build something like.
Yeah, maybe there, maybe there's a gap.
Talk to me afterward anyway.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, um, you know, we submitted that petition, uh, to the school board and said, uh, because they were actually having a discussion on those recommendations that Friday at the school board, we submitted it to the committee that was discussing them. It was the standards and assessment committee. How things get assigned to committees is kind of funny. Um, but, you know, Black Lives Matter made a lot of noise on social media. They got a lot of articles printed with quotes from them, but none of those guys showed up to the committee, right? They didn't show up to the board meeting. They didn't show up to the committee. And we had public comment in, uh, support of, you know, Natalie and in opposition to these new trainings that are need, not useful, won't accomplish the goals that they set out to. Um, and that's, that's kind of the grassroots, the down ballot effort, if you will, is, uh, show up to the relevant meeting. Uh, talk to the stakeholders, the members of the board. Or even, you know, the, the committee that created these recommendations and just voice, uh, your opinion. And if you can do that in numbers of, of a few hundred, then, you know, likely your voice will be heard. I mean, as Kim mentioned earlier, sometimes we have representatives that can ea, more easily get their voice heard, right? That, you know, the opinion of, or the, uh, comment of a council, uh, person might be worth, you know, uh, a few hundred average citizens in terms of, uh, if an elected representative is gonna pay attention to it. But, but that's really what we gotta do. Um, if I can talk about local school board, uh, issue for a second here.
Can, can I stop you just for a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think what you're talking about is important, right? It's, it's having these people show up to this meeting, you know, and you, yeah, you're saying a few hundred people. And, and I think a lot of times people don't understand what that really means. And when I talk to people like about podcast numbers, it's the same thing. Well, I only have a few hundred people. But if you really think about what a room full of a few hundred people is, I mean, your kid's classroom for a few hundred people times 10, right? It's your kid's classroom times 10, right? It's, uh, a few hundred people is, uh, we live in Utah. If you're LDS, it's about the size of your ward. If you had your whole ward show up, right? It's, it's a decent sized number of people. And when you have that many people show up, especially in a smallish room or auditorium, it really makes an impact because all they see is all these people who care about this issue. So how do you organize that? How, how do you get, how do you get hundreds of people out there? That's, that's the question I have. And then we can talk about the local school boards.
Yeah. I mean, communication is, is difficult and, uh, it costs money. There are some free ways to try to communicate with, with masses of people. Those include things like Um, those include things like email. If you have email lists uh, for your different organizations that you're involved with. Obviously, you know, social media until they shut us down is, is a way to uh, you know, communicate with people and say, hey, this is an issue uh, you might not have known about. Um, if you support us, please, you know, send a letter or sign this petition or show up at a meeting. Uh, there's not too much show up at a meeting lately because of uh, COVID and draconian restrictions and such. But uh, th- those are kind of the more classical ways to uh, organize. Show up, show up at a protest. You know, that way you can get more media attention and exponentially uh, expand, you know, the reach of what you're trying to communicate.
You know, I think um, that the concept of gathering and communicating has really been stressed in my mind where we've seen uh, so much deplatforming and denial of deplatforming. But um, it's social media has made it in- instantaneous and in the ability to organize and communicate. And, and to be able to build through algorithms. And you know, so there's a reason why social media has chosen to platform us. And I don't care who wants to deny that. That is happening. And well, now they're, I mean, of course they admit it now. But it, it does challenge us. And I thought a lot about how, I mean, because we're organizers. That's what, you know, Erin and I have done, is like what I've done for my whole adult life. Um, but social media popped in and uh, we got rid of phone books and we got rid of, you know, community bulletin boards. And so with some of those, the, the new technology taken down, um, yeah, that's a challenge. And, and I, I do fear, or I should ha- I should say I'm very concerned that we're less able to gather, less able to raise awareness. Um, even, I mean, this, I don't want to detour this, but um, you know, even hydroxychloroquine was hidden from the people. Anytime anybody posted a study, talked about hydroxychloroquine, it got removed, it got scrubbed. And so people were denied even the very knowledge and choice of that. Now, of course, health officials have reversed that. Another shock of the day. So um, that we're not even able to freely exchange information. That absolutely impacts our ability to gather. Um, and the other side knows that. They absolutely know. They, they kind of threw the grenade in the middle of us. We all scattered. And now there's 57 platforms that we've all started running to that um, they, some will brag about not using the algorithms. But algorithms is what is how I connected with a lot of people I didn't know, but we shared something we cared about. So I mean, it's back to kind of pick and shovel work with, with organizing. It's talking to your neighbor about things that uh, maybe social media made it so that you didn't have to talk to your neighbor about the uncomfortable things or the political things or the controversial things. Uh, we may have to just talk more. And I, I don't really know where, where we go. But um, I imagine we'll kind of settle into some platforms that are going to kind of rise above the rest.
They haven't shut down our, our phone lines yet. We can uh,
Yeah.
We, we can go all Phyllis Schlafly and do, you know, phone chains.
I, you know, I'm not kidding. I'm like, are we gonna get to, you know, passing notes on the street secretly and hidden in books carved out?
Well, yeah, it, it's just sad because you, you see so many good and reasonable people. They're, they're not talking about conspiracy theories, but they're being throttled, right? They, they're not allowed to say things. They're not even allowed to say, hey, I don't know if hydroxychloroquine is a good idea. But I wonder if they could make it available in Utah. So some doctors could, could see. You know, I couldn't even say something like that because that's actually where I am kind of with that issue. And uh, yeah, people can't even, you know, question the orthodoxy. Uh, if the, if the New York Times publishes something that, that is then the truth and then everything gets Facebook fact-checked based on that and, and you're getting, you get posts shut down. And you know, I run, you know, a few Facebook groups. And even if people share something that I don't actually approve of to be in the group and Facebook says that it's false, they downgrade the group.
Yeah, I've seen that with a number of groups, like even tech groups, right? And they, I've talked to the uh, organizers of those groups and it, they just got to notice somebody said something in your group that we don't like. And so we're going to throttle you. And you know, they're going back and they're going, what, what, what was it? You know, who said it? What was it? And nobody knows.
Okay, so how about this? Uh, where are you going for your news now? Okay, you wake up in the morning and you need to know what you need to know for the day. Where are you going?
So funny enough, I am a podcast person. Big surprise, everybody, right? That's why I reached out to these guys and I said, let's do a podcast because that's where I get my news. And so I tend to listen to like Glenn Beck and Ben Shapiro and uh, Sean Hannity's shows on a podcast. And I, I mean, that's where I get the majority of it.
Okay, I'll tell you where I, I live now. Um, so my family mocked me forever that I was 24/7 Fox News. And really not, it's mostly white noise in the background somewhere. Uh, oh yeah, Fox News I did a while ago. Um, I'll tune into Tucker once in a while. Um, but left Fox News and uh, went over to Pluto. Pluto TV. So that's on your SmartCast. It's an app. But it's got a lot of your conservative stations there on Pluto TV. It's free. It's app-based. And I, they have um, well, Wake Up to Bannon and uh, The War Room. But then there's uh, One American, uh, One American News Network, Newsmax, but I think they blew it. And uh, Glenn Beck, the, the Blaze TV is there. There's a good number of. And there's, there's also some mainstream on that too. But, but that's kind of a one-stop shop for conservative news networks.
Pluto, C.L.U.T.O.
Pluto, like the Disney character.
Or the, the non-planet, okay. Pluto dot, okay. And you do not own stock in, in Pluto. Okay.
No. No.
No, that, that's interesting. I had, I'd never heard of it. You know, I, I recently, and I'm trying to find it right now, heard of uh, a, a website and I feel like it's called uh, Blind Spot or something. Um, but it talks about articles that are exclusively like reported in like left-wing uh, publications versus articles that are only getting published in right-wing uh, publications. And it kind of can show you like why maybe certain demographics or people that you know have never heard of, of news stories that you're hearing about everywhere, right? So it's like, I have like friends on social media that will usually share. Um, you know, a lot of news stories from conservative perspectives. Um, I like to hear, you know, sometimes what the left is concentrating on. And, and sometimes I see, sometimes I see their blind spot stories and I just laugh and I'm like, really? This is like, this is what's concerning you right now? So it, it's, it's for my enjoyment as well. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll figure out what that is and I'll share it with you. That's something new that I discovered. Otherwise, I, you know, I do get uh, you know, news from, from local sources uh, still. Um, I know that they're biased. So going in, I, I know how to read things. Oh, I think Charles found it. Uh, Ground News?
Ground dot news slash Blind Spot.
That's it. Yeah, Ground, Ground News Blind Spot. And I think they do a pretty good job of compiling things of what percentage it is on the right or the left. Not necessarily saying those are the most important things, but that's in, in addition to whatever news you're consuming.
Yeah, but I like the idea of, hey, you're not seeing this because you're only hearing one side.
Correct. Yeah, I don't get a whole lot of like national news, like from Fox News or like CNN. And I, I just can't handle it. Like my, my stress can't handle reading that stuff. It's just frustrating.
I do think there is wisdom in, in looking at the other side too. And you know, the fact that we even talk so much about the other side. You know, I think our, our parents, um, grandparents, ma- a little bit me grew up with Walter Cronkite. You know, most trusted man in news. And, and you, you didn't even have a thought of whether there was a, a, a left or right bias. Um, he was, he was who you gathered around your TV set and watched and adjusted. You know, um, rabbit ears. But um, now it, it is too much about sides. But anyway, if you want to get news on your side, right side, go to Pluto. They're all on it. And Love Boat reruns.
Nice.
I mean, just add to what Charles was saying. I, I do podcasts as well. Like I listened to a lot of Daily Wire uh, podcasts and whatnot while I'm working. So I can, that, that's like national news. I'll get kind of a summary of national news from them. But I like to hear about local stuff too. So you said we could circle back to.
I was gonna say, let's circle back. Let's, let's circle back on this.
Is this, is this my fault? Do I keep going?
No, no, it's, it's good.
Let's, let's circle back. I, I wanted to show you something that's going on with my uh, my local school board. Can I share my screen? Or should I just talk about? Okay, let's, let's share a screen then.
Just keep in mind that some people are going to consume just the audio. So make sure you.
Oh, yes. I'll, I'll, I'll definitely describe what, what we're talking about. So Alpine School District um, has their own uh, diversity, equity and in- inclusion.
We're seeing your counsel. Outlook?
Oh darn. That's not what I was going after. Ignore that. Oh, there we go. They looked similar. Okay, now are you seeing it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they have their own diversity, equity and inclusion team. And someone just pointed out to me the other day, I, you know, that they ran across this, this page. Um, I don't know how involved they are with, you know, doing different initiatives and projects at the school. Um, and it looks like they actually maybe refu- uh, removed a few of the things, but I'll just tell you what, what it had earlier. Um, it had a, a list of links um, for resources and one of them was Southern Poverty Law Center.
Ooh.
Ouch.
Which, which y'all know is terrible and biased. Um, under books, I'm not seeing it now, but they were promoting Ibram X. Kendi, how, how to be an anti-racist. And you know, obviously that has, you know, like anything, it has like some maybe good ideas in it. Uh, but a lot of it is just saying, if you don't agree with me politically, then you're a racist, right? If you don't agree with uh, redistribution and, and things like that. Uh, th- therefore you're a racist. And that's kind of the entire point of that book. Um, I'm not seeing that here anymore. So maybe me talking to my local school board member and the uh, the website administrator made a few changes. But what's still on here is under resources has the 31 children's book to support conversations on race. And it, and if you pull that up, you see books like Some People March, but it's not talking about, you know, the March for Life. It's talking about uh, you know, Black Lives Matter. It's, it's talking about, you know, pride uh, parades and, and things like that in this book. Um, it's a very politically motivated book. Um, and then probably the worst example is when Aiden became a brother. Setting a new standard of excellence in transgender representation by centering the feelings of Aiden, a biracial, black and South Asian transgender boy. And they, they're promoting these children's books with uh, political undertones and political messages. And you know, that's, that's linked off of a taxpayer-funded uh, website for Alpine School District. And you know, people, you know, my, my school board member and, and my state school board member obvi- often tell me, oh, well, that's, that's against the law. They can't put that stuff in there. I'm like, yeah, but they did. They did it. What are, what are you going to do about it, right? How um, basically um, the, the left, I'll call them does what they can get away with. If we don't push back as, as parents and as stakeholders in our community, um, then they will push their agenda through our schools and through our communities in whatever way they can, even if it's against the law. So that's, that's all I had to share on, on that topic. But you know, that may be the, the topic of a upcoming petition uh, soon.
Somewhere other than Action Network, you mean?
Uh, yeah. Or under a different name on Action Network, who knows?
Um, one other thing that I, I've seen that's been interesting is um, I have a number of my neighbors who are um, teachers in the public schools and elementary and high school. I don't know if I have any neighbors who are teachers at the uh, middle school over here. But another thing that's interesting is when I bring this stuff up with them, uh, the number of them, a few of them have just looked uncomfortable. But a few of them have actually said, when I brought up the critical race theory and things like that and mentioned that, you know, this committee was recommending training for all the teachers, they looked at me and said, I'm not doing that. And I think, I think pushback from the teachers and other school officials also can make a difference there. If, if we can do that. And so just making people aware, hey, look, this is coming. And if we can speak up now, then we can not have to fight to get rid of it later.
And, and that's something that I actually hear quite a lot, even from conservatives like, oh, well, this isn't implemented yet, so we don't need to fight it. Or, you know, I, I saw somebody uh, post about the uh, curriculum that Black Lives Matter, the organization has created, not only for Black History Month, but uh, for year round. And you know, that definitely has some concepts I disagree with in, in it, like that all cops are inherently racist. I don't want my kids learning about that. They have children's curriculums for all of these things, right? They want to start, they want to start young. And, and someone said, why, why are you stoking fear about this? Why? You're, you're just fear mongering. And I'm like, I know that representatives from this organization in Utah are already talking to members of the school board, uh, legislators, uh, Democrats uh, to try to implement this and push this. And they're coming up with strategies now to get this into schools. Do you, do you really want to wait until it's in your kid's elementary school to try to get rid of it?
And it.
And then if you try to get rid of it, what do you think they're going to call you? What?
Right.
Are they going to do the same thing to you that they did to me? Yeah, of course they are.
It's far easier to prevent something than try to prevent something was it's taken root. And so that really needs to be uh, the call to action is to be proactive, defensive mode to, to stop these things.
Yeah, I, I think there's a disease in Utah and it's called, what's the worst that could happen? Itis. I, I think, I think too many people have that. And, and some of it is defeatist, like what can I actually do about it? But a lot of it's like, eh, what's the worst that could happen? I think everyone's well-intentioned in, in our government and, and on our local, local boards. I'm sure, I'm sure they would never let anything bad happen. You can't, you can't uh, be that way. I mean, all that's, all that's needed for evil to succeed is for good men to do nothing.
Well, we trust, I mean, I think it's our nature in our state and our culture to trust a lot more. Um, but you know, the left has tactics that are just insidious. And, and they are hard for us, first of all, that even recognize. So if, if, if you read, you know, some new school program or something that on its surface sounds very nice and it's, it sounds like something you'd be okay with it. It's um, you know, best class, I think honestly, the best class I took in college was research methods. And, and the thing I learned, the, the best thing I walked away with was question sources. And um, look for sources. So programs that come into your school, look who, look who's behind it, who's driving it, who's pushing it. Um, look at the research behind it because you can do anything in the name of research-based or data-based. And um, if we spend a dollar on this now, it'll save our school system $10 down the road. And those two things can justify just about anything, any policy, any program coming into our school. So um, so looking at your sources and who's driving this, where's it coming from? What does it look like? Is there a larger, deeper agenda? Is there a national association? I mean, you can start looking at some of these things and connecting dots and, and deciding if, if this is good for your community, good for your children, your family. Uh, but we just don't always recognize it because it sounds nice and the bow on the box looks pretty.
Inclusion, inclusion sounds really nice.
Yeah.
Until, until they're reading a transgender children's book to your kids in third grade. And then it doesn't sound so nice. That happened in a Murray uh,
Yeah.
Uh, s- school, uh, district school. It happened at Parkside Elementary. And the parents didn't know about it, but you know what the justification of the teacher was? Well. Well, our Director of Personnel for the district put out a memo saying that we support diversity, equity and inclusion. So therefore I'm able to do this. That's all that she needed to say, I'm going to go forward with this. And it's funny because that memo was written by her. It was written, it was written by, it was written, it was written by her and her Equity Council. And then and then they put the Director of Personnel onto the Equity Council and said, the previous memo that you put out that said that we need to be politically neutral in our schools, that was harmful, that was harmful to me in the community. And so you have to put out this memo. And so we put it out and then that was used as a basis to share things that are against the law, against state education law in Utah. And this teacher still works. I mean, this teacher wasn't even punished. I mean, it was a slap on the wrist discussion that basically the major win that came out of that is that the higher ups in the district, Murray School District said, we're going to put the Equity School, the Equity Book Bundle on hold. And we're going to look into, you know, the practices of this this Equity Council. So that's that's a win for now. But, I mean, as long as these teachers still feel empowered to do whatever they want without consequence, then then we have an issue, right?
Yeah, well, and unfortunately, that's the wake up call that most of the time we get is it's been implemented. It's been enacted, it's in law, it's part of the policy. And then something like this goes down and it's like, what can we do about it? Well, now we have to go back through the whole process to rip it all back out. And so, yeah. I think the other silver lining is that it's it's raising this issue again because I had a few people come to me and bring that up too and say, can that happen here? And I'm like, I don't know. I mean, I know the teachers at the schools that my my kids go to, but I don't know the kids, the teachers over here at the public school. You know, I'm assuming that me, you know, the vast majority of them aren't going to do something like this, but I don't know them.
Yeah, and and to to have peace of mind, you really need to have, you know, elected officials and leaders in the schools that are that are going to do something about this, that are going to hold people accountable to the law. Maybe we have to go back to the law and say, you know, what is the, you know, the disciplinary action that's taking place? Is are the administrators actually following that? I know I was looking that up earlier today. We we have laws against talking about, you know, you know, encouraging politics and religion and such in in the classroom. And it says in in the Utah State Code, it says the state school board will determine, you know, what the the disciplinary policy is on that. And then I went to a state school board member and said, okay, well, let's find that in in the in the board code, basically. And she she found it and said, oh, well, we we punted this to the the local school districts.
Right.
Says, okay, the local school districts will determine the disciplinary action, which I actually agree with, right? I want I want some competition in how school boards operate. But, you know, then I contacted my local school board member and that they've started ignoring me because I talked to him about this website issue. So it's very difficult. And are they going to follow through? Are they going to make sure that that policy is being followed? Who knows? You got to do it as a parent.
Yeah, and I think that's that's one thing I would want people to know is your local school district has an incredible amount of authority and to to make those choices. So too often they blame the other. And in fact, recently I heard someone saying, well, we can't teach this. You know, we can't teach the, you know, exceptionalism of our founding because the federal government won't let us. And I'm like, where did you hear that? Or we can't do this because the state makes us do the other. And that's just not true when it comes to curriculum, when it comes to teaching methods, which is really, that's the essence of most of it is is what are you teaching and how are you teaching it? All of that is on that local level. So don't let them deflect to another level of government. That's being chicken and it's being dishonest. So you have a lot of control at the local level and as parents influence it.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in on this too, you know, just because I sit on a school board. That what Kim said is absolutely correct. We have policies for our school that dictate what curriculum choices we make. I mean, we have to teach the things that are mandated by the state, right? We have to follow all the rules.
Those things and be clear because people think like, especially during the Common Core rage, people felt like, oh, we have to do what the state says. And and now the state says you have to teach the times tables by this.
Yes.
Grade.
Yeah.
Tell you how you teach it, what book to use, what methods to use.
That's true.
So, sorry, go ahead.
No, it it, thank you for the clarification because I, yeah, I get steeped in this stuff. Like I'm the new when it comes to the the other stuff. But, yeah, you know, so we picked Saxon math, we picked Spalding for English, right? That was our prerogative. That was up to us. The charter school that I'm chair on the board for, we teach Latin in the school, right? That's not mandated by any state, anything, right? But we, you know, it's it's part of the way the school was set up and it was something we decided was important, so we continued it.
It's also not prohibited, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, there's things that are allowed and there's things that are prohibited, but.
Right. But they tell us, you know, so we try and follow, I can't remember the name of their curriculum off the top of my head, just because I'm talking about it. But core knowledge.
Yeah.
So we try and follow core knowledge. But core knowledge has things in a different grade order than the state does, right? And so we've had to switch them because we have to follow those rules, right? But, yeah, for the rest of it, we we determined that. You know, we we have a policy about teaching logic and logical, well, we took the logical fallacies part out because it was hard to teach first graders logical fallacies. But, you know, so we we mandate that they spend a certain amount of time teaching logic in the school. And so we do have that power at the local school levels. And we can absolutely make sure that this stuff isn't coming into the schools if it doesn't belong there. The other thing I want to point out, because Kim keeps bringing it up, is if you want to see what your school and your school board are doing, all of that documentation should be public. All of their policies should be public. All of their minutes from their meetings should be public. And by the way, the school board, when it acts, it votes, okay? So if you want to know what they're actually acting on as a board, as a single entity, is the things they vote on. And the way that they record that and make it binding is by putting it in the minutes so that it can be attested to later. That's also why they ratify the minutes in the next meeting. So if you want to know what they're looking at and what they're doing and what they're actually taking action on, the minutes is where to go. And you can go look through the last six months to a year's worth of minutes in probably an hour or so and get a really good idea of what they're talking about, what they're doing.
Absolutely.
All these, all these things take time, all of them.
Yep.
And some of them have video, so if you want to sit through the whole thing, I'd rather scan minutes real quickly.
Yeah.
But but absolutely. And, you know, I just want to emphasize, I know I've said this before. Don't, don't be intimidated by any of this process. They really are, they're they're just regular people in your community that represent you. Don't feel shy, don't feel intimidated to go speak in 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 a public meeting. And most governments do allow public speaking time. That is not necessarily a right. The the a council meeting, a board meeting is there for the purpose of doing the the business of that. But most do allow a time for you to come. And certain, there are certain decisions, certain votes that require open and public hearing. And that it's called a hearing. And it's usually part of a meeting that within the meeting is called a hearing. And during hearings, there is mandatory public comment. But just don't be intimidated by the process. Don't be afraid to speak. Don't be nervous. Nobody's judging, you know, if you.
You don't need to make a YouTube video out of it. You don't need to like, you don't need to be epic. In fact, it's probably good if you're not. Because people, you know, they laugh at those people and don't take them seriously.
Yeah.
But honestly, I've I've showed up to these meetings too and afterward took somebody aside and said, okay, what was going on with? And they'll connect the dots for you because they realize that they represent you and that you have the right to know, at least the ones that really care and that are good folks. And they'll 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 go out of their way to help you out. And what I found is that most boards and committees and things like that, they have at least a couple of people like that on it that will explain it to you.
So so I get automatic emails every time my school board is going to meet, every time the state board is going to meet, every time the school board is going to meet and it tells me what their agenda is for that meeting. So I can say, hey, do I want to take an hour out tonight and either, you know, listen to or attend this meeting? And that way you don't need to feel like, oh, I have to attend every city council meeting. I need to attend every school board meeting. You don't, right? If you look through your city council agenda and it's like congratulate this girl on winning an art award and approve the development of, you know, a sports equipment store in this location that I it's nowhere near my house, then maybe you ignore that meeting, right? So if if we have any more time left, I kind of wanted to get back to the deflection game that Kim Coleman spoke about and how that relates to the legislative session. Because I have a lot of, yeah.
I was going to say, we're we're running out of time and I, yeah, I was going to do the same thing. I want to talk at least for five, 10 minutes about, okay, what what do we need to be paying attention to and taking action on out of the legislative session? Because I think we've talked a lot about school board and I think it's been important. But I don't want to miss anything else, if that makes sense.
Oh, there's so much. So so we're still going to miss stuff, but I'll talk about, you know, one bill and how that kind of relates to all other bills that are interesting me this session. So there there's a bill HB ninety two that a lot of people in in leadership up at the Capitol don't don't like because it's controversial and they don't want the media to report on it. And what it does is it stops children from being sterilized by cross sex hormones if they're under eighteen. And says, if you're over eighteen, you can get whatever surgery and hormone treatment that you want. But if you're under eighteen, you, you know, nor your parents really have the decision making capability to do irreversible damage to that child. So that that's been hit in a rough spot. And, you know, there's a lot of deflection. You talk to your representative, they say, well, the the bill is stuck in rules. And then you go to the Rules Chair, who's Timothy Hawks, and he says, oh, well, you know, really, this needs to be approved by Speaker Wilson before it comes to rules. Speaker Wilson says, oh, well, that that Spencer Cox, he he's threatening to veto it. So what what should, what should we do? And everyone is is deflecting, right? So you kind of got got to go where the rubber meets the road. I I started, you know, a letter writing campaign to the Rules Chair as well as all the other representatives to, you know, pressure that committee, the the Rules Committee to talk about the bill and move it forward into a House Committee, right? Just that one part of the process, I'm concentrating on that. Just give it a hearing, give it a vote. And then you got to deal with the other part of the process is if the governor is threatening to veto, do you need to do a letter writing campaign to the governor? Do you need to do a protest at the governor's office, right? There there's all these different levels in decision makers that you have to talk to. And you kind of got to know, you know, who who's really the emotional backing behind a bill being blocked? So why I say that relates to a lot of other bills is in the state of the state address, Spencer Cox said, I'm going to veto a lot of your bills, so watch out. He told the our elected officials, the legislature that. And they're kind of all worried about it. They don't want their bills vetoed. They feel like that's a nail in the coffin for that issue, that concept forever. And that that's a problem because he's threatening veto of a lot of bills. There's there's a, there's pro life bills that are stuck in committee for informed consent for a woman to know what's happening in an abortion before she gets one. For some reason, our conservative state won't let that bill out of rules. We have bills that are getting out of rules like, you know, sex ed changes by Carol Spackman Moss to open the doors for more things to be included in the sex ed curriculum.
And younger.
Early, originally, she said she wanted to start sex ed in first grade. So you know, maturation is completely different, something I don't oppose. But, yeah, that that's what her bill said is we're going to start talking about different forms of of sex in first grade. So somehow that makes it out of rules. But we we have other bills that, you know, seventy percent of Utahns support that are not making it out of committees, they're not making it out of rules. And they're getting stonewalled by our legislative leadership. And that's a big problem, I think, with this new administration. It's always been a problem, you know, during each legislative session is leadership, you know, telling legislators what will and won't be passed and what they will and won't vote for. You know, Kim knows this. She had bills that were voted against for no good reason, like free speech. She wasn't allowed to pass a free speech bill.
Well, these, these elections have consequences and there's a consequence to the legislature choosing the leadership as well. Because leadership then chooses the Rules Chair. And he's one of the most powerful. He can keep your bill and kill it in rules. He chooses the other committee chairs where they can also be held and and worked against. So in the world of elections have consequences, not the least of which is also our leadership elections. So we.
Which we don't take part in as a citizenry. It's, you know, Speaker of the House and, you know, Senate President.
But it is a campaign issue for me. If I'm, I I'm talking to the people who are running to be my Senator and my rep.
A lot of people don't pay attention to that. And so they can't pressure their representative to to vote in a certain way. I know that there was, you know, kind of a battle for Senate President a little while back after Neiderhauser retired and I gave my input on who should be the the Senate President because I I didn't want the other guy. And my representative wrote me back and just told me personally, okay, I voted for who you wanted, right? Like, I don't know, I might have been the only person who talked to him about that. But, you know, if you don't vote for the person who ends up winning, then they could punish you. And and I think, you know, they vote for the rules of each legislative session. It's not like written in into the Constitution that you need to give your legislative leadership all the power. But we do, right? Each and every session, I don't know if Kim had some thoughts on that. Maybe we can talk about it in a different podcast. But is there a way that we can make it so the, you know, Mitch McConnell's and Nancy Pelosi's and Brad Wilson's and Senate Presidents don't hold all the power? Is it, is it, is there, is there a way to petition things to get out of committees like there is on the federal level where you can do a discharge petition? Things of that nature, I think.
It's just your basic old fashioned lobbying. Lobby your rep to lobby the Rules Committee to get it out, get a bill out that you care about. Lobby the Rules Committee directly to get a bill moving. And, you know, I'm not even sure if everybody watching this even knows how that works and what the Rules Committee even does. But it's it's the hopper of all the bills. It's the basket where all the bills go and that committee gets to decide if they come out of the basket and and ever get a vote at all. So if there's something you care about that's stuck in rules in the Rules Committee, then that's that's the first real rung of of lobbying effort. And then there are many more after that, but if it doesn't ever leave there. So, yeah, right now, that is the the party that is in the majority gets to choose their leadership. That's a secret ballot, by the way. It's the first vote you cast and it's the only secret one you cast. And but, you know, for for good reason, like Aaron said, you know, if if you aren't on the side of the guy who wins.
There will be revenge.
There and and it's bad. I mean, it's been bad.
And there's there's people who run against the guy who ends up winning and then all their bills get killed. And and you can notice these things in different voting patterns. You're like, you you don't even oppose this bill, Senate President Adams. And he's like, oh, well, this guy ran against me. So.
Well, I don't know as much about the Senate side, but, you know. Well, I don't know as much about the Senate side, but you know, um, yeah, that can happen. That can happen where there's absolutely, there can be retaliation if you didn't support the, the person who won. So, um, so the app, people are thoughtful about that. They're nervous about that. So.
You, you gotta give them the courage. You gotta support them and, and back them up and say, you know, you know, this is the right thing to do. I know this is the right thing to do. Please use a little bit of political capital and, and do it and, you know, um, I don't, I don't want to call them out specifically, but it, it's in a good way. Steve Christensen uh, spoke at a, a forum that I was at recently. And he said, I did not run for the legislature because I wanted to be reelected. I don't, I don't do this work in order to, to get reelected, so I'm gonna follow my principles. And I'm gonna push for important legislation, even if it's controversial. And even if it makes leadership mad at me, and if they try to take me down in the future, so be it. But, uh, it's, it's what I'm gonna do. And that's kind of the, the attitude that Natalie Klein has as well. Not all of us can live in that reality. A lot of us have to live with the reality of what the consequences are if we don't, you know, cave to different interests and, and leadership and whatnot, but um, I'm, I'm definitely happy for the people who are brave enough to stand up. Kim was one of those. She was the best one. I'm just gonna say that again. She was the absolute best one.
And there were consequences when I stood up.
And there was consequences.
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
And it, and that is why it's helpful for elected officials to hear from citizens. It does empower them. It reminds them that they're not there to make the Speaker of the House happy. They're there to make 40,000 people happy. And, or, or satisfied, I should say.
Can I show my shirt again? I know I do this every podcast now because last time I was wearing a Kim shirt, but my, my shirt says, yikes, it's that guy again. And I love this shirt because I feel like this is how all the legislators feel about me. I want all of my elected officials to think, yikes, it's that guy again.
Well, on, on that note, I, I guess I just want to, uh, because we do kind of need to wrap up, but yeah, I guess there, there's been a lot of discussion about what we can do and how we can stand up. And so, yeah, I really just want to kind of summarize some of those things. The, the writing campaigns and the petitions, um, the, the rallies and demonstrations, but also just the going to the meetings and talking to people and making public comment. And, and I just want to embolden people, if anything, to just, you know, take a stand, just pick an issue that you think is critical to you, right? It could be the critical race theory. It could be pro-life. It could be something else. And then, and then make it, in fact, I, I challenge you, if you're, if you're listening to this podcast or watching this on YouTube, take a minute and think, okay, now how can I show up, right? How can I show up and make a blip? And maybe you only have time for a five-minute phone call to your legislator or a 20-minute on hold and five-minute call to your legislator. Depending on how their office runs, right? But at the end of the day, you know, is it that? Is it actually driving up to the Capitol and sitting in the rules committee and waiting for public comment and letting them know how you feel about stuff? Is it, you know, I mean, my local reps, they live here, right? And so is it, you know, show, I, I don't encourage people to show up at their house, but get ahold of them and sit down over lunch. I've done that with both of my reps.
You can call on and then, uh, ask if you can text them in the future and, and say, hey, I'm gonna show. I mean, quite honestly, the only way I ever get things done is if I build a relationship enough with an official to say, I'm gonna text you in the future. Is that okay? I'm not gonna abuse that power. They're like, yeah, I won't block you. And, and so, you know, I, I have that relationship with like my school board members, state and local and, and, uh, not my current local legislator, unfortunately. But my, my state Senator and, and some others, so I can, uh, text them and say, you know, what, what's up with this? Can you call sometime? Do you want to come over to my house? And, uh, a lot, a lot of them are more, you know, open and receptive than you would imagine. Uh, some of them are not and you need to vote them out.
I agree. But the other thing is, is that if they're used to hearing from one or two people on issues and they start hearing from 10 or 20 people on issues, it'll get their attention. And so that's why I'm challenging you, find these issues and show up. I really love Aaron's point though. If you have a relationship with somebody, I have a really good relationship with both my rep and my legislator or my Senator. Uh, my Senator's actually, he lives in my neighborhood. But yeah, you know, I can reach out to them and, and they'll listen to me. And that's part of why is because I've sat down and had conversations with them. But even if they're just hearing from, you know, four, five, 10 times as many people as they normally do on an issue, it'll get their attention. And I, that's what we need. We need, we need to let them know that we care about these things. Because otherwise, I think sometimes they'll wind up shooting in the dark and sometimes they'll wind up doing whatever they feel like.
And it works and it matters. Even one voice.
All right. Well, let's go ahead and wrap up. Um, I know there's a ton more to talk about, but you know, let's, uh, circle back in a week and see what else there is to cover.
Alrighty.
Max out, everybody.